Okay, it's 6:30. I'm calling the March 3rd Planning Board Meeting to Order. And I want to thank all of you for coming here tonight. I know it's been a busy day with the election and, but you know, like democracy that we've been participating in today, I hope all of you have voted. A town works best when its residents are fully engaged. I'm glad to see as many of you here tonight as are. We are sincerely looking forward to your input. And we plan to have more such forums like this. There is a sign up sheet in the back. So we're not going to let you get away unless you duck out without signing on it. Because we'd like to let you know when other events like this take place. So you can continue to participate. Where we are tonight started as the germ of an idea perhaps seven, eight years ago. As three of us met as the Local Comprehensive Plan Subcommittee of the Planning Board. This is the Cape Cod version of a master plan. That's what the Cape Cod Commission has called it. And that's the tradition on the Cape. It's been a learning experience for us as individuals and the board as a whole since we had no familiarity with the concept of form-based code. So during that period of time, the board and us as individuals and other people in town have been learning. Our town planner, Tom Bott, who sits over there, will explain the history that includes votes of town meeting, surveys by the Cape Cod Commission, and potential designs to give you a fuller understanding. Then Jim Fox, over here, will present Density Done Right, which we hope will provide a springboard for lively discussion. Falmouth is its own unique place. If we put the effort in as a community, we can create our vision for the future. A predictable space in which to live, work, play, and raise families by using physical form, the physical form of buildings and streets, rather than segregation of uses, which is the old type of zoning that started, oh, I don't know, in the 20s, I think it was, in Ohio, where it was all just on grids with the uses separated. It will be more predictable if we do form-based code for those who choose to live in the space, for those whose role it is to develop the space, and for the town boards and committees to govern. We're asking you to please actively participate in this. This is your town. It will be your vision, not just something that's decreed by the planners or the planning board or the town government. Please answer the question. What does Falmouth choose for its future? And now I'd like Tom Bott to get up and do his thing.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Bott. I'm the town planner here in Falmouth, Mass. And I voted. My sticker is different because I voted in Plymouth. I didn't want any trouble. So why are we here tonight? Why are we here tonight to talk about Davis Straits? Based on years of study and discussions and meetings and meetings. Because currently, our zoning is broken. The things that we love about Cape Cod, the things that we think endear us to the places that we know, aren't allowed anymore under zoning. We've zoned our history away. So form-based code is, take a predictable look at zoning for redevelopment strictly, specifically for the Davis Straits area. It's not the entire town of Falmouth that we're talking about. We're talking about the Davis Straits area and creating zoning that is graphic, that is easy to figure out, easy to see. If it looks like the picture, you get to build it. And in a way that doesn't have to rely exclusively on driving everywhere in town to get to where you're going. And this is not something that is just new to us, as you've heard. The area identified in Davis Straits is 76 acres. It goes along Main Street from Scranton, past Falmouth Heights Road, along Davis Straits, past Springbars to Worcester Court, along Worcester Court down to Alma, with Alma's the southern edge, and some of Dillingham, as well as in the area around from Morse Pond. Town meeting in November 2019. For those of you who are town meeting members, thank you very much for your support in voting, for the funding, for us to hire the folks who are here with us tonight, who are going to be helping us with developing the form-based code. From previous studies from 2013, Peter tells me this works just fine. So it started off with the Springbars Road assessment. And then we had the Davis Straits study. And then most recently, in developing the missing middle through our Community Resilience by Design. So we've gotten to this point through a scope developed by the Cape Cod Commission, through funding provided by them, to bring us to the point that we are at, at this point. So with funding in hand, I'm getting the impression I have the wrong show on here. I do. So I thought, a lot of these slides, my staff helps me out very much. And then I'm the person with the gray beard who puts the wrong show in. So form-based code is essentially a very predictable, developable, regulatable form of zoning. And we'll hear more about that in just a few moments. So we've gotten to this point, as I said, through the Springbars Road Study that predated the Davis Straits Study. The 2014 Housing Demand Study. And these studies both pointed out the complexities and the difficulties of the zoning that we have to try to build something that allows us to get back to that original Cape Cod sort of feel that so many people appreciated. The Local Comprehensive Plan in 2004, voted by a town meeting, called out, looking at form-based code as a potential zoning option for the Davis Straits area. And in 2016, as we launched into Davis Straits, we had a planning study that went on with, again with the assistance from the Cape Cod Commission, where we looked at the form and the stakeholders' concerns. And those concerns included traffic congestion, affordability, safe streets, cafes closer to the street for outside dining and things like that, parking to the rear of the lots. So all of these things are built to get us to the Davis Strait Reset Study, which once again identified the areas of town and called out for the potential to look at form-based code as an alternative to the zoning here in Falmouth. So with the assistance of Union Studio, who's in the house with us tonight, we take the next step based on the form-based code structure put together once again, working with our partners from the Cape Cod Commission. So with that, we'll turn it over to Jim Fox, who is going to talk about what the form-based code is. And then we'll introduce the good folks who are here with us tonight from Union Studio, Jeremy Lake, Joel Vander Wheel, and from Horsey-Witten Group, Nate Kelly. I'll do my very best. Is that an option for us, Peter?
Okay, the problem with the lights, we asked about this originally, and they just double-checked. If we dim the lights, then nobody out in TV land is going to be able to see these slides at all. I'm sorry, they're washed out, but we can't do anything about it.
These will show up a little better.
We can do that.
These show up a little bit better.
Yeah, they're a little bit better.
Form-Based Code. The Planning Board is exploring the use of form-based code as a way to meet the housing needs of our town, while at the same time protecting the environment, resilience, and the character of our community. Community Goals and Public Policies from our Local Comprehensive Plan. Policy Number One. Falmouth shall continuously analyze the zoning rules that guide development to ensure that they are flexible, fair, and innovative to improve the quality of the public streetscape. Policy Number Two. Falmouth shall thrive and grow by guiding development into convenient and pleasant villages suitable for the 21st century, balanced with large reserves of open land. Policy Number Three. Falmouth shall encourage a high-quality and durable built environment that respects the culture of the community. Policy Number Four. Falmouth shall provide for a comprehensive network of access corridors to accommodate many modes of travel. Policy Number Five. Falmouth shall encourage increased density primarily through redevelopment in some areas and discouraging development in other areas. Falmouth first adopted Euclidean zoning in 1925, being one of the first towns in the Commonwealth to do so, named after famous Supreme Court case, Town of Euclid v. Ambler Realty. Basis of used zoning was to separate noxious uses from residential settings. Issues with Current Zoning. The segregation of uses has also led to isolated zones for commercial, residential, and institutional areas, which are only linked by auto and thus failing to create walkable pedestrian-friendly neighborhoods. While conventional zoning closely regulates a variety of aspects related to use, parking, buffers, et cetera, it does not regulate the aspects that help in enhancing the character of buildings, streets, and open spaces, which together form a neighborhood. Comparing Zoning Types. Conventional zoning specifies density use, floor-area ratios, setbacks, parking requirements, and maximum building heights. Zoning design guidelines utilize conventional zoning requirements, and they specify the frequency of openings and surface articulation. Form-based code dictates street and building types, or mix of types, build two lines, number of floors, and percentage of built-site frontage. A form-based code is a land development regulation that fosters predictable built results and a high-quality public realm by using physical form rather than the separation of uses as the organizing principle for the code. A form-based code replaces all or part of the zoning ordinance of a city or town. A form-based code is a regulation, not a mere guideline, adopted into a city or town zoning bylaw. A form-based code offers a powerful alternative to conventional zoning regulation. Instead of concentrating on land uses, meaning the use of the building primarily, plus any outdoor commercial use, this new type of code is a legal design regulation that describes the desirable physical form, placement, size, and bulk of buildings within the environment. It also addresses the size of blocks and their relationship to one another. The regulations and standards in form-based code are presented in both words and clearly drawn diagrams and other visuals. They are keyed to a regulating plan that designates the appropriate form and scale, and therefore, character, of development, rather than only distinctions in land use types. This approach contrasts with conventional zoning's focus on the micromanagement and segregation of land uses and the control of development intensity through abstract and uncoordinated parameters. For example, floor-area ratios, dwellings per acre, setbacks, parking ratios, traffic, to the neglect of an integrated built form. Form-based codes are regulatory, not advisory. They are drafted to implement a community plan. Ultimately, a form-based code is a tool. The quality of development outcomes depends on the quality and the objectives of the community plan that the code implements. Main Elements of Form-Based Code. One, Regulating Plan. A planner map of the regulated area designating the locations where different building form standards apply. Two, Public Standards. Specifies elements in the public realm. Sidewalk, travel lanes, on-street parking, street trees, and furniture. Three, Building Standards. Regulations controlling the features, configurations, and functions of the buildings that define and shape the public realm. Four, Administration. A clearly defined and streamlined application and project review process. Five, Definitions. A glossary to ensure precise use of technical terms. Optional Code Elements. Architectural Standards. Regulations controlling external architectural materials, quality, and appropriateness. Landscaping Standards. Regulations controlling landscape design and plant materials on private property as they impact public spaces. Signage Standards. Regulations controlling allowable signage sizes, materials, illumination, and placement. Environment Resource Standards. Regulations controlling issues such as stormwater drainage and infiltration, development on slopes, tree protection, solar access, et cetera. Annotation. Text illustrations explaining the intentions of specific code provisions. Visualizing Better Streetscapes. The form of our towns and cities affects the quality of our lives. The facades of buildings should welcome people, not repel them. Buildings should contribute to the public realm, not hide from it. Great streets happen when road and building designs are matched. Small towns can be revitalized by building on their original form. How we regulate urban form shapes the life of communities. Visualizing Better Streetscapes. The form of our towns and-- Visualize-- This slide shows the existing condition with the illustrated case study for form-based code outlined in red dotted lines. Note Staples is the building with a white roof and a blue pin in the middle. In the top left-hand corner, you will see an example of the proposed regulating plan utilizing form-based code. Current Zoning for B2. Max Density, six dwelling units per acre, shown here as 20 dwelling units per acre. Max Height, 2.5 stories, shown here at two to three stories. Shown with reduced setbacks for multi-family. In the right-hand corner, you will see a key showing the different types of buildings used in this diagram. Mixed use walk-ups, walk-ups, manor houses, double-deckers, townhouses, and duplexes, totaling 4,500 square feet of retail space, 52 units, and 20 dwelling units per acre. This is a rendering of what form-based code could look like. Timeline. Starting with the district local technical assistance being awarded in February, the work on this project will continue to November when we will seek funding at town meeting. Then in January 2020, public hearings will be held. Then come town meeting in November 2020, it could be adopted into the zoning bylaw.
And that's Davis Straits. And this, all this presentation was put together--
Thank you.
--put together just by going to the, on the web and taking things from the Form-Based Code Institute. They have all the information there, and all we did is collect it and paste it together. I just, my daughter and I just formatted it. What we're trying to do is create a walkable neighborhood. What exists now is a giant parking lot. And it's, hopefully, we'll be able to-- The challenge we've had, our housing study that you saw 2014 gave us three challenges we had to do. One of them was the accessory apartment bylaw. And we worked for three or four years, and we got that through town meeting, and we passed the accessory apartment bylaw. The other thing that Falmouth does not have is any multi-family zoning at all. Well, it does have some in our business zones. You're allowed to have six units per acre. But if you were to apply that six units per acre to this two and a half acres, you would get 15 units, and they'd be 2,000 square foot apartments. They're not going to be affordable. So our zoning doesn't work, so we have to change it. So this is an attempt to find a way that we can have a predictable outcome of what the zoning is going to look like. Because we're going to try to specify the form of the buildings and the look of it, hopefully reaching out to you folks and all getting involved in helping us pick the type of buildings we want to have and where we want them. And then so when the developer comes, they have a formula, are all set to go. And the intention is here, I'm working on some of the math on this too, which is quite difficult, we'll be sharing in the future. But we've got to convince the owners of the Falmouth Plaza to tear down the buildings that they're, I think they're making-- I've got the money, but they've got great income on it. We're going to have to get them to forgive or forget about two years' worth of income and spend like $13 million rebuilding it all. And the only way to do that is make sure, and we know what we're going to get, is to get a predictable form on it. So we'll be opening up for questions right now. The main purpose of this meeting was just to start talking the same language. So form-based code, the public realm, that's the street and the front yards. We want to try, that's what we're trying to do, is to try to work on what we want that to look like and how we want to feel. And the main purpose of this whole thing is we are building a walkable community where people can, they can walk out their front door, get something to eat, walk downtown, catch a bus to anywhere on Cape Cod, and work if they have to. The apartments are going to be rented, not owned, and we want them to be small and affordable so that younger people can come in and have a place to-- Right now, if you move to Falmouth, and you've tried to, you can't afford to buy a house and you want to get a job, you can't find an apartment. It doesn't exist. Because we don't have it under zoning. So we're trying to create an area in town. We're going to start off with 50, but if we continue it all the way through for the next 20 or 30 years, we could have a section in town that is on the sewer, walkable, and near downtown. And we really would like, we're so happy with what Main Street has become over years, with taking the telephone poles and switching them back and making it a walkable downtown. Our downtown's so successful. We'd like to create a village on the other end of Main Street, have it both, and have them both connect to the harbor. And that's generally where this idea came from. So now we'd like to open it up for--
Nope.
What's next?
Introducing the consultants. Based upon what has been done, as Tom has described, town meeting voted some funds so that we could continue the effort by hiring consultants. They put in, they answered an RFP, Request for Proposal. And out of that, Union Studios was chosen, and their local group is Horsey-Witten. And Tom, would you please introduce? Because I already warned them I'm horrible at names. I'm sorry.
For the purposes of tonight's discussion, if you've got questions, we'd like you to come up to the microphone so we can capture that information on TV. So we have Jeremy Lake from Union Studios, Joel Vander Wheel, Union Studios, and Nate Kelly from Horsey-Witten Group. They have been on the job for approximately two weeks. And we don't have a contract with them yet, so they're here on faith. So I did not ask them to put together some amazing presentation because frankly, that's not how this works. What is tonight is about hearing what's on your mind and how we move forward in this. So I'll just have Jeremy say a couple of words of hello and what their gig is. And then we'd like to hear from you folks.
Good evening. I was told I wouldn't be put on the spot.
Here I am.
No, it's all good. I'm Jeremy Lake with Union Studio. Some of the things that they shared tonight, the Community Resiliency by Design effort that we did about two years ago here in Falmouth with the Cape Cod Commission, myself, Joel, we were very involved in that effort. So even though he said we've only been two weeks on the job, the reality is, is we've been two years in Falmouth thinking about these issues, talking about these issues. We're very familiar with the Davis Straits area. So we're really excited that we got chosen to be able to continue that conversation because we think this is a really wonderful town, lots of great opportunity and potential here. A lot of the lessons learned and things we had been talking about there have great applicability to what we want to do moving forward. And we were very excited to bring on Horsey-Witten, Nate Kelly of Horsey-Witten. They are experts in zoning, zoning reform. So they're a great teammate for us to be working with. So we're certainly here. We're happy to help answer some of the questions as they come up. But again, this is just the start of a process that's going to be ongoing for the next several months. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. What we're looking for from your participation tonight is, you've seen what Tom has presented. You've seen Jim's show, which gives you a pretty decent overview from the Form-Based Code Institute as to what can happen. And what we're looking for is any kind of ideas that you might have that you'd like to see down there at that end of town to revitalize it. I think you all can, well, probably most of you do remember the old Main Street. And then it was renovated and revitalized. And it's never without people anymore. People sit on the sidewalks, they sit on the benches, they converse. They eat ice cream as they're walking down the street. And this isn't just the summer people either. So this is the kind of thing that we'd be looking for from you as to what kinds of things you'd like to see in a redevelopment of the Plaza area tonight.
So as I said, tonight is about questions and not about answers. So we're trying to understand what's on your mind and how this works. There are three additional public meetings that we'll have during this process over the next year. So don't feel like we've got all the answers. We're looking for all the questions. So we've got a basis to put together what works for the town and what worked for the area. So please, step right up.
Hi, I'm Gina Torrielli. I'm a town meeting member from Precinct 2, and I live on Alma Road. So the question I have is, are there plans to involve the neighborhoods that are on the perimeter in terms of how you transition from, you know, our neighborhoods into Davis Straits? Because I think that's, you know, we're going to need some detail on, I think, and maybe some consultation in the process, just so we know. You know, my sense is there might be a general positive feeling because certainly, we're not looking at anything gorgeous, you know, there. But we have, you know, a neighborhood that right now is, you know, walkable, relatively minimal traffic, that kind of thing. And so those kinds of things, those details are what's going to really make it or break it for us, I think.
Thank you.
You absolutely can't do this without talking to the neighbors. And we were on Alma Road today, I thought it was lovely.
Jim, do you want it?
Yes, one of the things we've done is, if you look at the plans closely, if you notice the buffers to Alma Road are smaller houses, they're shorter, and they're one and two, they're two-family. And so that they're closer to being single, so we kind of blend it in. And as you move further away, then the larger buildings come. So we're not going to put a great big looming building next to a single-family home.
It'll probably be a duplex and kind of blend it in slowly, trying to merge the neighborhoods. Now, we're filling in the middle there. We're taking, we're walking from single-family to mixed-use. So we'll have some multi, smaller multi-families, then bigger ones down the road as you move down. So we're trying to blend it in and feather it in. And that's all part of the process of Form-Based Code. We'll actually decide the shapes and sizes of those first blocks that'll be your neighbors.
Charlotte?
And then Bob? I just wanted to answer the process part of that question. The process for site plan review always involves a notice to all the abutters, an opportunity for a public hearing. No decision is made at that initial hearing, and it might take several hearings, so that there's time for people to see what's planned and come and respond to it. Because this won't happen as one enormous development, it will happen piece by piece by the developers deciding that they want to make a change there. So you would always be notified in advance of a change. And if you serve on town meeting, or know people who do, nothing can happen until town meeting votes for the regulatory changes. So this is not an overnight flash of lightning. It's slow, there's always a public notice. It does mean paying attention to those public notices, but there's always that opportunity.
Bob?
Where can the people that are here and the people watching this at home get access to the Density Done Right presentation?
Jim?
It's actually, if you have a television that you can talk to, one of those buttons, you can push YouTube and say Density Done Right, and it shows up right there. So it's posted, you can find it on YouTube under Density Done Right. You can Google it that way, or you can use your voice control.
And I think there's a link on our website as well.
It's also on the town's website.
On the planning board website.
Anyone, town meeting member, has had it sent to them. So that's, and if you could just, we can, we can send it to you too. If you just call us up and wanted it sent to you individually, we'll be glad to do that as well.
And the studies that Tom referred to are on, I believe it's the Planning Board website. Is that correct, Tom?
Yes. We've got links to all these right on the homepage for the Planning Board website.
And I would say those are very helpful. I, you know, we've been looking at those. One of the things that would be helpful, though, is the renderings are so small. And they're, you know, and especially when you're trying to look at them on YouTube or compressed, if there could be a place in town like, like the, close to resiliency, until we had those posters out here in the library, I couldn't tell what was going on. And so even, you know, something like that, a place in town, whether it's Gus Canty or the Senior Center, where we could see those and kind of get a feel for it. Because it is that sort of feathering, and I understand we're in the initial stages, that right now isn't clear.
And there aren't any pictures right now. What we have is, it's basically a painting. It's like an impressionist art. It's a rendering that says this is a concept.
Yeah, and I do want to make sure that's clear. Jim has gotten super excited about this rendering we did, and he's trying to make it happen, even though it was literally an illustrative case study we did for the previous effort. So even what we drew, that's not what's getting built. That was really meant to be an illustrative example of this idea of transitioning down towards the edges and stuff like that. So I say that, I think Jim wants to make it happen tomorrow, and maybe he will. But I just want to make sure that's clear too. There's no development happening tomorrow based on those drawings. That was just meant to give you a sense of the sort of things we're talking about, so. Come on up here.
Good evening. Paul Cap, Precinct Three, Town Meeting Member. I have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns. I think my biggest concern is that we're going to be cloning Mashpee Commons and moving it to this new area. Is New Creek LLC on board with this? Are they going to own the housing? Are they going to build it? Who's going to own it? Who's going to collect the rent? How much of it's going to be affordable? We are never going to maintain, we're never going to achieve the percentage of affordable housing in this town as long as we allow contractors to come in and run roughshod over us with their 41Bs, all right? And the monstrosity that we built on Spring, Spring Falls Road is horrendous. It's a project, all right? You're talking about doing away with all the zoning, all the regulations, height, setback. And you want to mandate that people have to plant the kind of trees that you people want. You have to put in the kind of windows that you people want, all right? It's, it's concerning, the whole thing is concerning. So there's going to be a lot of questions coming up. I'm sure there's going to be a lot more. But have we spent the $49,000 yet?
Not a nickel.
Not a nickel? Okay. Cool. I hope you guys get some of it.
Thank you. Eric, come on up.
Hi, my name is Rosemary Carey. I live in North Falmouth. And as many of you may know, there is a broad coalition of organizations and groups across Cape Cod that are bringing a climate emergency declaration to spring town meetings all across the Cape. And I'm the petitioner for Falmouth. And what that petition asks basically is that towns acknowledge the risks of global warming and as a risk, you know, to people of the town, declare a climate emergency, and then direct, ask our select board to direct all departments and committees to include the goal of reducing greenhouse gas reduction in every decision they make. That's all town departments and all committees, including the planning board. So as admirable as this presentation is, the walkable communities and dense housing and multi, multi-unit housing, these are all great goals. But from a climate perspective, I really don't see any of the things that you would, not any, enough of the things that you would see in a, in a sustainable community, like orientation of the buildings so that they are ready for solar, solar panels upon building, solar can, parking canopies, electric vehicle charging stations, community gardens, playgrounds for children to keep them outside and enjoy and learn about their green spaces, and on and on. Just so many features of sustainable communities. This is the time to think about it, and I would hope to see that as this project goes forward.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Eric Turkington, Precinct One. As you know, I've been immersed in wastewater for the last 10 years. And I'm very appreciative that all your planning is planning around the sewer, which is what we do. You may not know, I've been sort of immersed in affordable housing too, in the Falmouth Housing Corporation. And, and so before I get into my questions, I want to commend Jim profusely for chasing this around. This has been a lot of work, and it's a complicated subject, and he's been doing an awful lot of work on it. And it's to his credit, the town appreciates it. But the challenge in the affordable housing world in Falmouth is that we have a housing production plan that says we're supposed to add rental housing, one to two bedrooms. And until we add 528 units, we are going to be subject to 40B with all that that entails. And as we all know, there's a lot of unhappiness with 40B when it's used to build single-family homes at market rates with a couple of affordables thrown in. But that's the only kind of development we've seen in this town with the 40B, except for highly subsidized nonprofit organizations like Falmouth Housing Corp. So the challenge is, how do we get the private market to build affordable rental housing? Because they haven't built any of it ever. I mean, basically, we're not talking about ever, but certainly for the last 25 years. There is a 40R option, which is not on the table now, but it's similar to this in a lot of ways. But the question I have, and I want to discuss the site a little bit more, is how do you guarantee that these units are going to be rental and that they're going, and that 25% of them are going to be affordable? Because if that isn't built in to the regulatory requirements, we're gaining nothing. We're just gaining a bunch of more condominiums at market rates, which we have plenty of already. Regarding your site, the enterprise reports, you're talking about the two-and-a-half-acre site with 50 units, 4,500 square feet. And you have pretty pictures of what that might look like. I can tell, show you what that looks like. You drive down the street to 704 Main Street, the Falmouth Housing Corporation building. That's three acres, that's 59 units, and that's 10,000 square feet of retail. So it's essentially the same-sized parcel with the same contents. And it is not a bunch of pretty little houses. It's one great big house, because that's what you have to do when you have two-and-a-half acres and you're trying to put 50 units in retail on it. So these pictures are not telling the story that you're going to have to tell. I looked at a place in Easton recently. They have 40R, same kind of deal. You do what we want, and we'll give you 20 units per acre. And I went to see what that looked like. It looked just like the Falmouth Housing Corporation building. That's what you do when you're putting 20 acres on two-and-a-half, 20, 50 units on two-and-a-half acres. You can't, you can't make it spread out. You can't make it a lot of little units on, on single foundations. You have to make one big building, which I wouldn't object to, if they were all rental and if 25% of them were affordable. Because if they're all rental and 25% are affordable, they go on our 10% requirement. And if we build 500 of those, we're scot-free on the 40B. But if they aren't, we're just building market-rate condos, and we've done plenty of that already.
Eric? And sorry, I don't know everybody's name, but I know the people I see pretty regularly. So if I say you, nice lady in the plaid shirt, come on up. Sorry, I don't know everyone's name.
Karen Bissonette, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, and Executive Director of Falmouth Housing Trust. So I've heard this presentation. Jim was nice enough to come to the Affordable Housing Committee and, and show us the presentation. And at the time, I was concerned because my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, none of these are going to be affordable. Is that correct? I mean, that's what you told me at that meeting, so.
I said at the meeting that we're trying to make them so that, that they can be developed financially for the property owners. If at the end resulted that 25 of them have to be, I just didn't want to start off doing it. I wanted to see if it could be done financially first. But at the end of the day, if that's what town meeting wants, that's what town meeting's going to get. But I was trying not to start off by doing an affordable housing project. Our goals are housing for everybody. And this, we're going to have portions of our downtown that will, you know, it has to be housing for everybody. We're not going to say the whole thing. Yes, we might have some of this, could have some deed restrictions on it, but we're going to try to see if we can do it without it. And if we can't, but see, we're trying to, we're trying to get the present owners that own the property to tear it down and rebuild themselves into mixed-use so that there will be apartments that they will, that they're not going to, the rent. That way, if we can have rental units, then all of them could be counted towards the affordable number if we want. But we're also trying to start, don't want to start off with the restriction saying you have to do everything the same, you know, that all the units have to be exactly like. We're trying to get smaller units and a mix of larger and smaller units so that it makes sense financially, it makes a great place to live. And at the end of the day, if we have to put a deed restriction on, on it and say 25% of them have to be affordable, that's what the town will do.
Okay, I just want-
We're not starting off doing that. That's the end of the day.
All right. Well, I'm happy to hear you say that, and I'm not opposed to the zoning at all. I just think that if we're going to undertake something like this in our community, that we really have to have some kind of affordable-
And Davis Straits has 72 acres, okay?
Yes.
And we've got a lot of other spaces. It's just the beginning little corner, and there could be plenty of room for other types of housing that does have the restriction on it. We're just trying to, this is just a concept, just getting started. And basically, what we're doing is building on a parking lot.
No, I know it well.
And, and so it's just at the very beginning, and we're reaching out to everybody here to give us your ideas.
I just want that to be part of the discussion. I don't want that to be lost in all of this. Thank you.
Not lost.
All righty. Handsome guy in the back. Everybody stood up, sorry. You, absolutely.
Craig Martin, Precinct Nine. I just want to clarify, I want you to clarify something that you just explained, Mr. Fox, that under what conditions did you say that all of them could be counted as affordable?
If you do rental, I'm not an affordable housing expert, but my understanding is, if you make them 25% of them affordable, that, and they're all rentals, that all of, all of them count, not just the 25%.
My understanding, and like you said, the 25%, is that's because that's the ratio for a 40B. My understanding is that if this is a 40B project-
Not a 40B project.
No, I know, but that's my understanding is that when all of them can be counted as affordable, even including the market rate, was that would have to be a 40B project if all of them are apartments. I'm sorry, if all of them are apartments.
So just-
I thought it would have to be, I thought it had to be a 40B project for, for all of them to qualify.
Just not to get too deep into the weeds, but there's a lot of options under 40B, which no one likes, under 40R. And the town also can do what's called a local initiative program, where they can say, we're going to develop something, and we're going to essentially 40B ourselves to create those affordable units. So there are a number of tools. But I think we've heard, and I know it's on the list, because I've seen everybody writing it down, units that are affordable and market-rate units. So it's, that's what these, this is early days, to get those ideas and understand what's on people's minds, so.
I think that's an important factor to consider, is that it has to be a 40B project, whether it be LIP, Local Initiative, or whatever, 40B for all of them to be counted as affordable, including the market rate. That's my understanding, but-
That may be, but that's not what we're proposing with 40B.
I know that's not what you're proposing, and that's what I'm, I was trying to clarify, that I don't think what you had said was accurate. Because I know that's not what you're planning, is a 40B.
Charlotte?
We're not doing a 40B.
Charlotte?
Anyone here can correct me if I'm really, really wrong, but I think what 40Bs do, it's a state law to allow developers to override local zoning. And the reason they want to override local zoning is because of the density limits. That's the primary reason. With our land as expensive as it is, and you can only put six units on an acre, it doesn't pay you to build anything. You need to have many, many more units before you can make any money. If you can't make any money, you're not going to build it. If the town, whether you call it Form B or Form-Based zoning or not, if the town allows higher density, then a developer doesn't necessarily have to resort to a 40B to override your local zoning. Because your local zoning has now enabled a density that makes it economically feasible to do that. What the town prefers is a friendly, we call them 40Bs. And a friendly 40B is when the developer works with the town, the town allows him to do, or her to do, whatever, and they don't have to resort to overrides. So we're hoping through Form-Based zoning and allowing higher density that Jim was talking about in this area downtown, that we will not have 40B overrides that create enormous buildings that we don't want, that we'll be able to have things that are predictable for the developer. One of the really great things about Form-Based zoning that we're hoping for, sort of like a fairy tale gift, is that we'll have a predictable way for developers to see what they need to do in order to have an economically feasible development and not have to go through a three-year permitting process, because the town will have enabled it in advance. That's, that's what it does.
Bob?
We initially came upon this as a result of the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee, because what we have is zoning isn't working. I mean, the gentleman spoke about the plaza and, and regulations and everything. Those are the regulations that created the plaza. So we either continue with that, or we do something different. And when you look at density, I always like to use the Odd Fellows Hall as an example. That is, that represents 20 units per acre. There's four affordable units in that one little building, on that one little piece of land. But that represents 20 units per acre. So it's, it's, you've got to wrap your mind around it a little differently, because right now, what we have isn't working.
Vineren?
Mark Vineren, Precinct Two. I'm by no means an expert on this, although I have passed a zoning article in town meeting. The zoning, our town zoning code that you continually mention, it's the foundation of all this. For the last 15 years, this town's been talking about updating and rewriting it, because we don't really know what it says. You can go from one page back and forth to another, and it's not my, it's not in my wheelhouse, but I'm not that dumb either. But it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. If we don't have our zoning code updated- If we don't have our zoning code updated, like I said, and I'm using inability here, as a foundation to continue on. It's, this seems almost into me, and I don't mean to criticize it because I know it needs to happen, and I know Main Streets work quite well with commercial space on the bottom and, and plenty of rentals on top. But it seems to me like this is almost like a, a spot zoning thing instead of identifying what our town zoning code really says and, and identify larger areas, maybe heights, what, I don't know. But this, I'm not against this, but it seems like it's a little bit ahead of the curve or whatever. Hope that made sense.
Mark, we're, we're already well into redoing the zoning bylaws.
But I mean, that's been going on for at least ten years.
So November twenty twenty, your dreams are going to come true. True story. We'll see a Town Meeting with a recog of occasions of zoning bylaw in November.
Okay. And again, along the same line of thinking, and I don't want to, wouldn't then be the time to make this.
There's, there's nothing wrong with working in, there's nothing wrong with if you can parallel paths.
Well, I know, but we've been on the ten-year path. And I don't want to beat this dead horse, but it's been a long time since anybody's really a hundred percent known what our zoning says.
I'm a professional, I read it and I go, I know what that means. So I'm with you. Uh-uh, I'm with you, Judy.
Thank you.
Yes, please.
Anne Carbone, I do abut the property that we're talking about, my, my home. It's the reason I moved to that particular neighborhood because it's already walkable. And I, I love the idea of doing this. And I, I mostly want to respond to the Mashpee Commons thing. There's no comparison. We already have a thriving neighborhood there. Mashpee Commons was just plopped down in the middle of nowhere. It's not the same thing at all. And then the other thing is, I do know a lot of young people who do have good jobs. They don't qualify for affordable housing, but they have college debts, they want to save some money. I, I think that's what we're all kind of talking about. We don't want to make this into a luxury kind of a place either where it's still not a place that someone can afford if they want just a small place and rent it.
Anybody else?
I'd just like to add one more thing. You've heard it from me before. But we kind of worked ourself into this position by buying up all this open space. And if we hadn't have gone so extremely in that direction, a lot of this wouldn't exist. And I don't think that people should let that stray too far from their minds or their thinking because, I don't know. Things are getting tight.
Well, as you said, this is our kickoff meeting. This, there'll be a series more meetings after we've got our, after we spent our first nickel of our forty-nine K. So don't think that this is the last chance to talk about this. Did I see another hand in the back, Rob? And Craig?
I'm pleased to see that the Davis Strait reset areas. I'm Bob Amet. I do a lot of zoning work as an attorney in Falmouth. I'm pleased to see that the reset area is much more than just the plaza and extends in each direction quite a bit. But I, I think that the denser zoning ought to be allowed in that area between Scranton Avenue and Falmouth Heights Road down to Robbins Road. There's a lot of surface parking areas in that area, a lot of buildings that are dated. Real nice place to go to, Paul's Pizza, but that's an example of the area, the laundromat, the other buildings that are older in that area. And on both sides of Scranton Avenue, a lot of open parking. And I think if this walkable area made its way down to Robbins Road in the head of the harbor, that'd be very appropriate. Thank you. I, I'm not sure whether flood zone issues in that area don't become a problem for new development, which might have been a factor in drawing the lines.
Craig? I know him now.
I actually had two subjects, and since this is almost the end, I guess I'll bring them both up. But I, the woman did bring up the comparison, and it's been advertised in the regional papers as the new Mashpee Commons. And they're giving, they're giving it that title. And it's, um.
Newspaper said that, we didn't.
Yeah, that's, I'm presuming, I didn't see it in quotes. But, but certainly that, that's not what it can be. I'm, I'm, I'm kind of skeptical how, how much success we'll have fulfilling the retail there. There are still ocean, I mean, empty, you know, vacant storefronts further down. So I'm, I'm a little worried that everyone's getting excited that, oh, we'll have some good, a good restaurant here or there or, and or, you know, fancy retail. And I'm not so sure how successful that will be. The Mashpee Commons is, it has Mashpee, you see, very good part of Bonstable and Falmouth to attract as, as customers. And here is obviously much more segregated. So I, I'm not so sure if, if someone's advertising it as the Mashpee Commons, I don't think it will succeed. And of course, they'll compete with Amazon as well. But I'm, I just heard it mentioned, I, I just now, just in the past speaker, and, and it seems to be what we're trying to get rid of is parking spaces and parking lots. And yet I, I see the town trying to go, they're around, trying to down around Main Street a few different locations, they're trying to find parking areas because we don't have any parking areas. I know that location that you're looking at is a place where we lead the parades for, you know, from and what have you. We actually have space to, to have those, those kind of celebrations. And I know I use that parking lot occasionally to walk a distance, you know, down towards the Heights or whatever. I'm not so sure we have too much parking. And if we're getting rid of all that parking, all the way through now through Davis Straits, and inviting more people to come, to come visit the new retail or what have you, I think we'll regret having, having lost some of the parking areas. So I, I don't think we should sell value parking areas too short.
Just to clarify, I think the, the discussion is around where should the parking be, not whether or not there should be parking. So another way of thinking of it is right now, the parking is in front, the buildings are back from the street. What if we could just flip, flip the story? So the parking now is behind the buildings, much like you have on Main Street. So the Main Street walking experience is very pleasant. So I think that's an important point because you're right, you don't want to get rid of parking where you need parking.
Charlotte.
Judy?
I'd like to speak to the, the comment about Mashpee Commons. We've heard it all over, and we're, we're really sensitive to that. We do not really want to repeat Mashpee Commons. And one of the things, although I like Mashpee Commons, I have nothing against it, but they already have it over there. Mashpee Commons is mostly retail, and they're adding residential now. What we're picturing, I believe, is mostly residential. If you look at something that's two and a half stories tall, that's really like three stories, and the bottom level, some of it might be residential on the first floor, some of it might not be. It won't be luxury boutiques. It's going to be stores for the people who are living above it. It'll be a variety of different kind of retail things, professional offices. It's going to create stuff for the people who are already, already living there. But it will be more residential, much more residential than it will be retail or commercial just based on, you've got three stories and only one of them is going to be commercial in some way. You, you can think about that. And that's not what Mashpee Commons is. Mashpee Commons is nearly entirely one-story. They're building one and, two and three-story buildings now, but that's only sort of later. So our impression of it is from that earlier thing. It was also said earlier, I think Rosemary, you brought up the climate thing. When you look back, and I know that you saw it before, but you might have forgotten it. The, the Davis Reset Plan, which is more or less our, our blueprint for what we're doing now, includes provision for extra storage for water as, as the sea level rises. It includes more open spaces to allow for that. And it will take decades to realize all of that, but that's planned into it. So that yes, we're trying to do that. Do you all remember Grant Walker? He just moved out of town recently. Grant made a crusade out of solar energy. He came to planning board meetings, he, he gave us material, he very respectfully told us what to think at the beginning of each meeting, and it made a huge impression on us. So that now, one of the questions that has to be asked of each site plan that comes to us is, so what are you doing about solar? You know, where are your energy provisions? And that's thanks to Grant Walker. Input makes a huge difference to what we do. So I'm glad you're here now to give us that input, but we're, we're already listening.
Anne.
So this is a whole paradigm shift for Falmouth. This is something very new, very different. And because of the love that people have for this community, and I'm sort of a four and a half year wash ashore, but I feel so invested in the town. And when someone says, oh, don't change it, it's not that we want to change it, we just want to, I want to say embellish it in some way. Mashpee Commons started as a response to smart growth, where you can have transportation, living, retail, everything sort of together so that people could actually live, work, and play in this area. It's what they've done in South Weymouth at the old Naval Air Force Base. But Mashpee Common was on the cutting edge of that development, that whole new development idea. And this, I don't think anybody in Falmouth would want this to be a Mash, a Mashpee Common. However, I still have this burning question, and I'm, I'm also on the Affordable Housing Committee, is do we have a will in this community for affordable housing? And with all my heart, I want to believe that we do. Because the people of Falmouth have hearts and souls, and I think they understand the concept of having young people come back here since they've skittered off across the bridge, to come back and be able to be a teacher, a nurse, a healthcare provider, and be able to afford to live here. And what's happened is we can't, and we also need obviously high-speed internet. But I always have to put that in every time I say bring young people back, because young people need that high-speed internet. So I, I think this is going to be a process, and paradigms don't change overnight. And it's just a new concept. How do we want to view Falmouth as we move ahead? And when we talk about the forty Bs and how to get rid of them, if we had the land and the sewage capacity to build, has anyone seen the Avalon developments? Okay, so Avalon goes in and they build hundreds of apartments, and you get your ten percent, and you never have to deal with a forty B again. But we don't have the available land anymore to do something like that. So we have to think of it in sort of segments. And how do we go about changing how we view a walkable town and not just build subdivisions with no sidewalks? Or we do require some sidewalks. But it's a whole different way of thinking. And we're not looking to come here and say, this is what we're doing. But what we are saying is, this is what we would like to do, but we can't do it without the community. And with any successful change, there's an invested community. So I think when you say, will people come and talk to us about what they're doing? I think these gentlemen will be knocking on your doors. I didn't put any words in your mouth, did I? To sit down and say, what is it, how can we work together? Because nothing is ever successful when a developer comes in and says, this is what I'm doing. We don't care whether you like it or not. And we don't want to see that. So we believe in these gentlemen, and they've done some great work for us. And again, it's a process now. And Rosemary, you're just right on with the solar. Right on.
My turn?
Sorry, Judy.
Okay. I've been standing out all day at the polls, so this is, this is more comfortable.
Thank you for that.
So two, two comments, maybe there are questions in here too, but they'll be rhetorical.
Please your name for our viewing audience.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy Fenwick, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I, I, I keep hearing the word character tossed around, and in my mind, character of a village, a community, a neighborhood is built over time. I understand right now you've got the need to compress that because of the need for housing affordable or otherwise. But when I, the part of this presentation I could see, there was one slide where there was the six or eight different kinds of housing possibilities, you know, like the one from column A, one from column B. And I'm just wondering how you develop character when you've got sort of cookie cutter modules that you put into something? And instead of having there be either a much wider range, which may be unpredictable, but gives people choice? So I'd be careful with using the term character when you're not offering anything with what I consider taste and character. Also, when I started seeing things about not being able to choose your own landscaping, I'm thinking of the issues we go through in this community with historic districts because there are restrictions there, but it's to preserve something that people appreciate. I'm not sure you're going to get people to buy into all these restrictions when it's not something that they learn to appreciate and feeling as if, you know, that they're, it's being dictated. And, and I don't know how you find the way around that except to maybe let there be collaboration on the kind of restrictions that are put in place. That's more of an agreement as opposed to restrictions. So just comments.
Thank you, Judy. Paul, you had something you wanted to say?
I have a comment. This is Director Jeremy. This is a difficult concept, as everyone has indicated. Can you give some examples of your urban group where this has been successful? Form Based Code in Rhode Island where you are, or Massachusetts? And if you don't have, able to do that now, maybe the next meeting you can come up with something a little bit more concrete. I think it'd be very helpful to show where this has been, where it occurred and what the success or, or otherwise was.
Anybody else? Eric?
One of them is Lowell, which is, as you know, an old mill city that received an enormous amount of money from Senator Sanguis when he was in office. They could, they could do a lot of beautiful things in Lowell. And the other one is, this, what do we call it? South, Southfield, which is not a town. Actually, Southfield is the old Naval Air Station being redeveloped. But it, it is not actually a municipality. So as I say, there are two places in Massachusetts, and I can't tell you what actually got built there. This is what got adopted there by, by Lowell and by the three towns.
Anybody else? Ben, chair.
Something that we've talked about before but hasn't come up yet tonight, but is worth repeating, I think. The town is already changing. It changes all the time. One of the changes that's happening, someone alluded to, there are vacant spaces there in that big mall. Malls are dying all over America. That mall is, may not be dying, but it's certainly not breathing very heavily. So it's going to change. There are three big owners there. They're going to be looking to, how can they change it in a way that they can make more money out of it? We don't want them to find their solution in something really horrible. We would rather have planned in advance for a change that the town wants. And by the town, I guess we really mean Town Meeting because that's where the chain goes to be approved. But in order for it to get through Town Meeting successfully, a lot of people have to feel that it's a good idea. So that starting tonight and moving forward, the more people can get comfortable with the idea of it and start thinking about all of that big parking space and those big boxes back there that aren't renting well, as maybe being a really good place for a lot of people across a mix of incomes to be living and working and playing. We'll, we'll get a feel for it and be able to work together on what it looks like. And I'd like to go back to a couple of points. This actually is Mark's point. Nobody knows what's in the bylaws now? Well, in the bylaws, there's a big section on landscaping. You'd be amazed what it regulates. I certainly was when I first looked at it. So it's already there, and this applies, and this will apply only to commercial developments. It's not walking into your neighborhood and saying, plant a big fir tree. That's not, not the way it is. It's for commercial developments. And the area that's involved does start just about at Scranton Avenue and includes that whole section coming down to what's now being planned by the state to be a rotary and then zips up to Stop and Shop Corner. So picture the edge of Gus Canty, all the way up to Stop and Shop. If that's the whole area right there, the question that Bob Amet, the concern that he raised.
Probably people here have heard me say this before. This is the germ that starts. Probably people here have heard me say this before, this is the germ that started, the germ of the idea that started with the Local Comprehensive Plan Committee. And looking around at what we have in town, it became obvious that the plaza was ripe for redevelopment. And my comment at the time was, if we don't plan for what we want, we deserve what we get. So we are asking you tonight, and we thank you tonight, for all of your comments and your questions that guide us in the direction of what you may want as a town, and as has been made amply clear, we will come back again for any comments and questions you have as, excuse me, as this develops along the way. And our consultants, as you can see, weren't really planning on being here this evening, and they have been busily taking notes to help them in their endeavors to help us get what we want as a town. We are a beautiful historic town, most people want to see history, maybe not preserved, but the essence of it used and built. Oh, yeah, Charlotte's pointing out, there will be planned here with the consultants, three more meetings. That doesn't take away from what we might have, smaller meetings. We always have a public comment at the beginning of our planning board meetings. If any of you think of anything that you wish to add to this discussion, you can always come to a planning board meeting and make the comment, because if, if it's not on our agenda, we are most happy to receive your comments. So I want to thank you all very much for coming out tonight and giving us your thoughts and your comments. Thanks so much.
Move to adjourn?
No, we're, we're adjourned.